Good evening, everyone. We're calling the Town of Hingham Board of Selectmen Meeting of September 11th, 2018, to order. Before we begin, however, I'd like to have a moment of silence to reflect 17 years ago where each one of us were on this very fateful day in our American history. So, in memory of those that lost their lives that day and those of us that have served in the defense of the country's freedoms since, I'd ask that you all join me in this moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Let's entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 28, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Is this an order?
Mr. Mayo?
I don't know what he's going to speak to yet, but we had asked that if Mr. Padone is here on behalf of Aquarian, we had asked that attorneys for Aquarian speak with attorneys for the town and not directly, not direct comments directly to the board. But I'm not sure what you're going to speak to, so I didn't want to presume.
So I received correspondence asking that correspondence be directed to counsel. Not that attorneys not speak to the board, but respecting that, I will make my comments and not ask for anything to be commented back if that's acceptable, or would you prefer to have no comments?
Generally, I prefer no comment, counsel. You know, we don't typically comment to comments anyways, but I think that under the circumstances it would be appropriate to forego any statement at this time.
Chairman, I certainly respect that.
Thank you so much, counsel.
Thank you.
I reviewed counsel's letter, and I believe that the intention was to ask that any communication from Aquarian attorneys be directed to Hingham counsel. Perhaps if counsel needs to clarify that in a letter, we could follow up.
We'll clarify that.
Anybody else before we start? Okay. First item on the agenda. Oh, yes. Step up to the podium and address yourself by name and address, please.
Diane Denapoli, 16 Gardner Street. This should be a simple question. Will we be allowed to ask questions after the presentation or not only in the open meeting section?
There'll be public comment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Chairman, just one additional point.
Certainly, Mr. Padone.
So I'm happy to not provide any comments tonight, but there are certainly points in time where it's appropriate for counsel to speak and address directly to the board, and that may occur in the future, and we may need to coordinate in the future. But that's all for this evening. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay. At this point in time, I'd invite Mr. Dempsey to join us at the table for a discussion with respect to signage at the Union Street Covered Bridge. Would you join us, please?
Certainly.
Where does he plug in the needle?
This is old-school talk. I don't know what else to say.
Thanks for having me.
Sure, thanks for coming.
So, Stephen Dempsey, 24 Spruce Street, lifelong resident of Hingham, 52 years. It's been a passion of mine in the past year or so to reinstate all the signs that designate the old bridges in town. At one point, every brook crossing and river crossing in town had a bridge with a formal name. And over the years, mostly in the '90s, all the signage went away. It just wasn't manpower to put them back up. So as a citizen and also as a member of the Historical Commission, it's been an effort of mine and my colleagues to start putting these signs back. And we've gotten Page's Bridge up, and we've gotten Wilder's Bridge over at Friend Street put up with the help of the Historic Districts Commission as well. And it came time for Fairings, and it's just a little bit more because of the covered bridge, so we decided that we wouldn't, I decided, that I wouldn't mimic the house plaque, I guess, that style, and would do something a little bigger. And that's where that comes from. So I'd like to donate that to the town. I put it together myself, and we can have it installed on the covered bridge facing the street. It looks a little big right now, but when you put it up on that structure and you're going by it 25 miles an hour, it's going to be appropriate. And I'm looking for your approval on that.
Questions or comments from my colleagues?
I just want to say thank you. It's beautiful. We so appreciate not just what you're doing with that sign, but you are a great steward of Hingham's history in a lot of different ways. And for everybody in the community, whether, you know, folks like yourself who have lived here all your life or people coming to Hingham, by preserving some of that and making us mindful of things that we might not notice in our everyday life is just so important to the fabric of this community. So, great job, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I can't really add anything to that, Steve. It's really, really well done, and it'll be exciting to see it up on that bridge.
Thank you. It'll be held up, just so you know, with four bolts that will appear to be antique. They won't be antique. There'll be some copper spacers behind it, so it will stand off the bridge a little bit so air will get behind, and there won't be any rotting or anything like that. And it's not quite finished. I've got a little fine tuning to do and some varnish and things like that, so hopefully another week we could have it installed.
So the bridge is outside the district, right? It's just, that scenic way designation?
It's on a scenic road.
So we have the authority?
Yeah, so it's fully within the layout. The bridge is fully within the layout, so it's within the purview of the Board of Selectmen. And this bridge had been priorly named, obviously, that. We have this map back from the 1820s or...
1830.
1830, that shows.
I can bore you with a brief history if you want, but...
The naming is appropriate, and...
It's historically accurate.
And it's your authority to do it. I spoke with the Clonscom. They don't have any jurisdiction. It's all yours.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that when I went to mail a letter the other night, I was delighted to see the sign of Burr's Corner under the mountain wood tree. Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Sarny did a good job on that one, and we got it up there.
That brought back some fond memories. Anybody else like to add? We'll just go right to the vote with our thanks to Mr. Dempsey for this dedicated work that he's doing. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the Fairings Bridge circa 1740 sign to be placed on the Union Street Covered Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to the next item. We have the Water Company Acquisition Update. Let me just think with this for a second. My colleague is going to be presenting us with that.
Something.
You can do this.
This is why I put Tom in charge of the clicker? Oh, there we go.
I like the flashing effect.
Yeah, so I included a strobe light in mine, just saying, you know.
I always want to dim the lights a little so that the... I think sometimes that helps for the viewing audience at home.
Too much?
Yeah. All right. Phew, okay. I kind of wanted a spotlight right on me, but... So first of all, you know, from time to time, I'm sure this happens to Paul and Mary, people will ask, you know, "So what's it like being on the Board of Selectmen? How's it going on the Board of Selectmen?" This project made me reflect on the opportunity that this role gives us to think about things that are really important for the town. And to think about them in a way and in a sort of depth and analysis that, you know, as a citizen, you do so much, but as a steward of the town, you know, this is part of your responsibility. And so I've actually found this part of the project pretty fascinating, to think about how water companies in the Commonwealth are owned and governed and how that might influence the decision that our town meeting may eventually make. So the first thing I'd like to do is really start with my thanks, and that is to Charlie Cristello and Josh Crumholtz. Neither Charlie or Josh could be here tonight. I hope it wasn't because of my presentation, but Charlie's away, and Josh's daughter's birthday is tonight, so they couldn't be here. But Charlie Cristello, as you know, is a former town administrator here in Hingham, and Josh is a litigator in Boston and has been involved in the Water Study Acquisition Committee. So they were both very valuable to me in, you know, vetting and analyzing this proposal. Tom Mayo and John Coughlin as well, you know, provided advice along the way. And last but not least, Michelle, as you know, this could not have come together without you. So I wonder if Bob, probably too much for Bob to cut to this, but this is what it would have looked like if I were doing it myself. We can maybe do that later, without Michelle. So that's what it would have looked like. So, you know, just a little agenda to sort of frame our thoughts for tonight. You know, the group talked about what our goals were. We went through a pretty methodical process. And then we proposed, we will propose in the, as part of the presentation, a structure that we feel fits with our operation as well as the proposed municipal rate-setting process. So the goals of governance, you know, efficient, number one, right? Efficient and professional operation of the water system. That's the job of whatever structure we come up with. They've got to provide quality water, continue to provide quality water to the residents of Service Area A. We'd bring transparency to rate-setting and the capital budget process. We would institutionalize a public voice and a citizens advisory board. And then this notion of day-one governance, you know, I found that when I started to think about this, my mind would just wander, like, "What about if we did this? And what about if we did that?" And what we tried to do as part of the governance group is really keep the blinders on to say, "On the day-town meeting, if it were to do so, on the day-town meeting votes to authorize the town to purchase this, what should the structure look like?" What it might evolve into is something that could be different, could be the same, but on day one, we need to run the show. And so the governance structure is aimed at that as a goal. And that would be in coordination with Hull and Cohasset as customers of Service Area A. So, you know, we start at the beginning, right? We have a special act that has given us the right to purchase our water company ever since 1879, when it was enacted. And the words are important because it tells us what we're buying, and then it tells us what our latitude is in running it. So we are buying all the property rights, privileges, and franchises of Aquarian, and we may exercise those rights, powers, and authorities by such officers, servants, or agents as the town may direct. So we're not locked into any governance structure in particular. And then the other thing that was important to me as I analyzed this is, you know, I don't think there's an exact complement, but, you know, when I was trying to wrap my head around what this purchase rate gives us, you know, we essentially step into the shoes, or would step into the shoes, of Aquarian on the date of purchase. So in some ways, a little bit like a statutory merger, you know, we become Aquarian for purposes of Service Area A operations and ownership if we choose to purchase the water company. So what are we buying? Well, we're buying Service Area A. And you've seen this slide before, but again, sort of a different view, a visual view of, you know, that's where the water goes, that's where the pipes are, that's what we have the right to purchase under the special act. What do we do? You know, how do we go about our task? So Charlie and Josh and I met a bunch of times, and then we would, in between meetings, mainly make phone calls and do some research into the state law. We obtained legal advice from town council. We reviewed the drinking water regulations. We talked to our water consultant. We talked to bond counsel in the water utility space, who was very helpful. Josh had a really lengthy conversation with him. We met with representatives, both elected and staff, from Hull and Cohasset. We contacted other municipalities and talked with other water superintendents, which was really edifying for me. We've had conversations with folks at the Mass D E P and then reviewed the tie-in-bond water rate survey for Massachusetts. So Tie and Bond, I gather, it's an engineering firm, and I gather since about 1997, Tie and Bond has been collecting information about water rates in different states. So you can go on the Tie and Bond website, and you can click on Massachusetts, and actually through the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, a dashboard will come up that's actually pretty interesting to use, pretty easy to use. And so what the dashboard has is water rates, water conservation efforts, but also has characteristics of the system. So it's easy to, you know, compare and contrast different-sized systems, different water rates, different ownerships. So that actually proved to be very helpful to us as we undertook this exercise. So what are our governance options? You know, what do other towns do? What does Massachusetts law allow us to do? So you could elect or appoint a separate board of water commissioners. There's actually a special statute where you can combine water and sewer commissioners. You can combine water commissioners and the light board. Or your executive branch of government, the Board of Selectmen or the mayor, can act in the statutory capacity of the water commissioner. Or you can go to the legislature and say you've got another great idea on how to structure this governance, and pursuant to a special act, you could come up with your own unique water governance structure. So, you know, we asked ourselves, after we sort of looked at, "Okay, these are our options. What direction should we go in?" We looked at what do other towns do? And I know that you've seen this slide before as well, but I looked at it and said, "Okay, you know, of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, there are 14 communities served in whole or in part by a for-profit water company." And it's a little bit misleading to talk about 14 communities because in some cases it really is just a part of a community. So for instance, Cohasset would be counted in that number as a community, and Aquarian Services, like, 400 customers in Cohasset. So it's more telling, I think, that only 1.3 percent of all water customers in the Commonwealth get their water from a for-profit system. And I think actually the bulk of that is Aquarian Hingham and Aquarian Oxford. The other for-profit systems are much smaller portions of municipal systems in the Commonwealth. So that was like, "Oh, okay, well, that's an interesting statistic, but what about us? What about if we look at accounts that are similar to ours?" And we are, you know, under the Tie and Bond UNC survey, we're lumped in with medium-sized water systems that service between 10,000 and 25,000 accounts. We have like 13, a little over 13,000 accounts. So there are about 41, or not about, there are 41 medium-sized water systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Guess how many of those are serviced by a for-profit water company? One, us. So 40, the other 40 municipalities in the Commonwealth that are like us in size, run, own and run their own water system. 39 out of 41 systems are governed by the executive branch of government, either the mayor or the Board of Selectmen acting as the water commissioner. The outlier in that 39 is Fall River. Fall River has what's known as the Watupah Water Board. It appears to me that the Watupah Water Board is appointed by the mayor, so may operate in somewhat of an advisory capacity, but they do have certain, I think, legal authority over the system. For instance, they are signatories to a contract for transient water provision in Fall River. So they, those three folks that serve on the Watupah Water Board have some, you know, some influence on the Fall River system. But other than that, other than that, it's the executive branch of government that serves as the water commissioners. The other really interesting thing I pulled out of the Mass D E P records was that really almost any other city and town in the Commonwealth provides water to somebody else in some fashion. Sometimes they're just selling water. Sometimes they're providing emergency water. Sometimes they're serving customers directly. The town of Attleboro is actually a kind of a cool example because it does all three of those things. It provides water to the line, I think, to, and I may get this wrong, provides water to the line, I think, in Mansfield. It services customers directly in Norton and provides services directly to customers in North Attleboro. And believe it or not, it had an emergency water agreement with the city of Pawtucket in Rhode Island at one point. So, you know, one of the things I think that tells you is that water seeks its own level and finds its own boundaries. And so you can't, it's not going to respect the political boundary of a municipality. And so sometimes, like, I talked to the water superintendent in Attleboro, and she said, "Well, yeah, we service a couple of customers in Norton because where those customers are, they're right near our pipe, and if Norton were to have to bring pipe to those customers, it doesn't make any sense." So my takeaway from my diligence on, you know, other customers and other towns in our system, which I thought was novel in my research, is not. So current Aquarian governance and ownership. So, you know, as you all know, fairly recently, Aquarian Water Company was owned by Macquarie and was sold to Eversource, which is a publicly traded national company mainly focused in the gas and electric space. You know, Eversource is a big sophisticated public company. It's got highly-paid executives and a 13-member Board of Trustees that are also highly compensated for their contributions to, you know, the national Eversource brand. Eversource just recently added water with the acquisition of Aquarian in 2017. So water is a new line of business, and the only footprint that Eversource has really is the Aquarian footprint, which is Aquarian Connecticut and Aquarian Massachusetts that you saw in the earlier slide. The 2018 proxy statement notes a 6.7 percent dividend growth and an 18-point percent shareholder return in 2017 compared to an industry average of 11.7 percent. That's great for their shareholders that include BlackRock and Vanguard Group, two, you know, two very professional investment houses. And that's all fine for a public company, right? They're not doing anything wrong. This is the way they operate. The question is, you know, do we need the blue, purplish box and the red box to run the green box? And I'd submit to you that my research suggests we don't. So if you look at those two boxes, that's a lot of, it's just expensive overhead, right? And I think the other thing it said to me was, when you look at it like that, kind of stacked on top of each other, and you think, "Where do the loyalties lie and how are the priorities defined?" They all sort of roll back up to the shareholder, which again, that's exactly what a for-profit company has to do, and if they don't do it, they could get sued. But when you roll it back down to water and Hingham, I'm not sure those values are necessarily aligned. Aquarian does have a citizens advisory board. It noted in its materials that it was reconvened by Aquarian in 2013, so I don't know when it operated before that or what it did. I will say that I couldn't find the membership anywhere. I know Ms. Denapoli, who's in the audience tonight, is a member. She identified herself as such. And Samantha Woods, who is the executive director of the North and South River Watershed, asked to meet with me and identified herself as a member of the citizens advisory board. But other than those two women, I don't know who's on that board, and I don't know whether folks are compensated directly or indirectly for their contributions in that capacity. I think that's it on that slide. All right, so, you know, what would we do differently? You know, what's the proposal? So the town of Hingham is the entity that has the right to purchase. So the town of Hingham would be at the top of the stack. And in keeping with, you know, what seems to be successful for other water operations of our size and sophistication, at least for day one, the suggestion of the governance group is that town meeting authorize the Board of Selectmen to act as water commissioners. So there are a litany of interconnected state laws that I have on another slide that allows town meeting to do that. So the legislature contemplates that the executive branch of government can act in that capacity and regulates that conduct as well. So the Board of Selectmen would wear a different hat as water commissioners. We do that for parks commissioners. You know, there are some times we act in a unique capacity, and so this would be one of those times where we would step into a particular role with statutory parameters. We would hire, and I think, you know, I think John said it, I think Mary said it, I think it came out in the engineering report, our intent would be to hire a fully-licensed water superintendent, who would be an employee of the town, who would report to the town administrator and up through the town administrator to the Board of Selectmen, like all of our department heads. This would be this individual's job. We would have an onsite water superintendent, and we would go out to bid for a water operating vendor. Again, fully-licensed with fully-licensed personnel, maybe the same, maybe different, but somebody to undertake capital improvement work. So the town, I think, over time, has learned that we need somebody onsite, somebody on our team to manage the manager, and that's what the water superintendent would do. You know, I did my best when I was talking with the water superintendents about the operation of water treatment plants. I learned a new vocabulary word, which was flocculent.
What's that mean?
You don't want to know. So you need somebody, bottom line is, you need somebody to talk the talk, and then you need somebody who's on your team to report up to the policymaking board about what the status of the operation is. And so we do that in a number of cases. I think, you know, off the top of my head, Roger Fernandez serves in that capacity in a number of different ways. He's got particular expertise. He evaluates proposals. He will report to the policymakers. We would look for the water superintendent to undertake that role. I think importantly, as has been demonstrated in the prior financial presentations, the cost of the water superintendent, the cost of the operation and maintenance vendor, and capital improvement costs are all reflected as part of the water rates, so they're being included in the water rates. So I think it's important to have a public voice in the operation and rate-setting of the water company, and the governance group agreed with that point. And as a matter of fact, citizens advisory boards for water are not uncommon. And so in this case, you know, our recommendation is that we would appoint a five-member board. We would be the appointing authority. We would appoint three residents from Hingham, one from Hull and one from Cohasset, as recommended by their Boards of Selectmen. It's a multi-town public volunteer body, be subject to open meeting law, public records law, state ethics rules. You know, they would be special municipal employees, just like a number of our other committee members are. They would advise on rate-setting, citizens complaints and concerns, and there could be other responsibilities built into the activity of that board. They would not be compensated. They'd be a volunteer board, again, like is the lifeblood of Hingham, I feel like. You know, I would envision, particularly in the short term, that we would try to identify folks that have a particular skill set that could help us not with this transition. So it might be people who work in the water utility space. It might be people who lend in that space. It might be, you know, financial people. But I think that would be... in that space, it might be, you know, financial people, but I, I think that would be, that would be my hope, is that we could attract some talent to that board. So, as promised, this, this seems like the John Asher type. As promised, I, I did want to just say, you know, because, you know, if we went back to that slide of the, and don't, don't bother going back, if we went back to the slide that shows virtually all of Massachusetts water being owned and operated by municipalities, the compliment is true that there has to be a pretty rigorous statutory scheme and regulatory scheme guiding those operations. And in fact, that is the case. And so, what I've tried to highlight here are those particular statutory provisions that are particularly applicable to the Board of Selectmen acting as the water commissioner. So, it's not as if, it's not as if Town Meeting kind of hands you the key and then off you go. There are rules of the road that need to be followed, that will be followed, and there, and the statutes are instructive as to, you know, what the rule entails and how the thing should run. So, these are a few of those, those particular statutes. And I guess the one I'd like to call out, because to me, again, it speaks to maybe what's different in a municipally operated water system and a for-profit water system, is Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 39E, and that's, that covers the management of the water system, and importantly, it indicates that the water commissioners would, the water commissioners are required to manage that system in the best interest of the town. So, Citizens Advisory Board, I think I covered much of this. You know, I, I guess the only thing I would say is, I would envision this to be a committee that would work with the water superintendent as the department head, you know, sort of like if you think about the Conservation Commission with our Conservation Officer, would be that sort of, you know, that sort of relationship, where I think that group could be a resource to the water superintendent in undertaking his or her functions. And, you know, Charlie in particular looked at Citizens Advisory Boards in other municipalities and, you know, sort of came back to the table and said, "It's not uncommon to have a Citizens Advisory Board as part of a water system." So, you know, one pushback to that is, you know, when I talked to folks sort of informally about this notion of a Citizens Advisory Board, and, you know, people said, "Oh, you know, Seward doesn't have a Citizens Advisory Board, and the light plant doesn't have a Citizens Advisory Board," and that, that's true. But I, I thought it was particularly important when we're making this sort of a change, for folks to know that there'd be an institutionalized public voice as part of the governance. So, you know, if we were, if we were purchasing the sewer department today, you know, might we include a Citizens Advisory Board? I don't know. If we were purchasing the light plant today, might we include that voice? I don't know. But I guess what I'm saying is, just because they, those kind of rate-setting entities don't have this complement, to me, isn't, isn't a reason not to consider it as part of this governance structure. Employees and vendors, again, you know, Mass Law authorizes the Board of Selecting, Selectmen Acting as Water Commissioners to appoint a water superintendent. You know, our intent, I think, would be to do that. The employee would be full-time, fully licensed water superintendent, and we would hire a, again, fully licensed water operating company. You know, that, these things are not choices either. You know, Mass DEP has requirements, so we would need to, we need to fulfill those requirements in the folks that have authority over the water system, and that's exactly what we would do. So then we looked at water company operations and, you know, how, how might, how might the governance then affect water company operations? So, we want to be able to ensure water quality. We would, again, we would recommend the adoption of an enterprise fund so that we can segregate the finances of the water system away from town finances. We would engage in a public rate-setting process and public capital improvement planning process. So, water quality. So, water quality, no pun intended, trickles down from the federal government under the Safe Water Drinking Act. And Mass DEP is responsible for the enforcement of the Safe Water Drinking Act principles through the adoption of the Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulations, which I commend to you. They apply equally to town-owned and for-profit entities. So, right now, Aquarian works with the DEP on water quality issues, reports to the DEP. DEP can come inspect the treatment plant, DEP can comment on, you know, water operations. If there's any, ever any issue, there are a series of notifications that have to take place that include notifications to the DEP. All of those, all of those parameters would be in place for a municipally-owned water entity. And then on acquisition, you know, I think there's paperwork that we would need to file both in terms of the water withdrawal permit or water withdrawal registration and confirming operational and licensure requirements with the DEP. So, for the finances, you know, again, I think, I think, I think it's helpful, will be helpful to have a, a separate enterprise fund for this operation. And importantly, under state law, the enterprise fund can retain its earnings, so that anything, any of the earnings in the system stay in the system. And so, you know, that way it can be plugged back into, all rates can then be plugged back into the water operation, and it doesn't become part of the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. You know, we've seen a couple of times now the financial model demonstrating that the rates are sufficient to undertake both oper, operation capital improvements and debt So, you know, you've heard me say a couple of times now, a public rate-setting process, and you think, "Well, you know, DPU's a public rate-setting process." And it is. But it's a, you know, pretty sophisticated process, I think, where, you know, we're represented by council, Aquarian's represented by council. It's in Boston, we don't know anybody on the DPU, nobody on DPU drinks our water. It sort of struck me too that, you know, DPU, when you go on their website to, to sort of look at and research rate setting, which I did a couple of different times, you know, they're mainly gas and electric-driven because there are so few for-profit entities in the Commonwealth. So, we, municipalities don't go through the DPU to set rates, only for-profit entities. So, you know, this is a, a point in the process, though, where the public can comment on Aquarian's requests for rate increases that, you know, take into account a bunch of the stuff, you know, below, including a return on equity, recruitment of their expenses, and, you know, foreseen increases in expenses. You know, my sense of this is, there's, it's a pretty stylistic metric that the DPU analyzes, you know, in, in granting rate increases. You know, what would our process look like? Well, you know, many of you in this room are familiar with our, our budget message and our process before the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen, our, our committee-based process, and then advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen. I would suggest to you that the budget for the water company and the resulting rates that would be driven by that budget process would follow a very similar format. There are, again, statutory requirements about budgeting for enterprise funds, which we would adhere to, that timeline, and frankly, our municipal budget process adheres to that timeline. The rates and rate structures for town-owned water systems are regulated by Mass DEP, not DPU. And there, Chapter 41, Section 69B also talks about water company budgeting and has parameters around that. So, you know, just to kind of mimic the arrow, and this is all Michelle, this graphic, again, you don't want to see my list of how this used to look. You know, it would follow, it would follow logically the budget process that we have in place, and would involve the Citizens Advisory Board throughout that process with the water superintendent. What is a little bit different, but what happens with, with Seward anyway, is at the end of this process, the Board of Selectmen Acting as the water commissioners would formally adopt a water rate. You know, I, I think one thing to keep in mind in, in all of these arrows is, this process would take place in Hingham. It would take place, you know, with folks we know, would be, you know, our neighbors on the Citizens Advisory Board. The advisory committee would weigh in. There'd just be a lot of eyes and ears, I think, on, on the plans and on the expenditures, and frankly, on the report of operations, which is also required under, under state law, that there's a series of reports that a municipal water company has to make to the town. So, you know, I, I guess I'd submit to you a, a localized, familiar, public process with rates driven just by the operation of the water company, not by the big box at the top for, you know, shareholder return or return on equity. It's about the operation of the system, and I think that's what those arrows show. And then the capital improvement process, so there is a separate statute, and I'd have to dig it out to find it, but there's a separate statute that requires the water, the water commissioners to report to the town on capital improvements and a capital budget. And we heard as part of the engineering presentation that, you know, at least initially, we would base our capital planning on the Tata and Howard and Canoe Reports, and come up with a tiered approach, just like we do for our roads, to rescue pipes that we can rescue, replace pipes that need to be replaced, and to kind of march through, create a budget and march through the priorities. The capital budgeting process would be part of our public capital, capital outlay budgeting process. Yes, we are subject to prevailing wage laws. I don't necessarily see that as a bad thing. We'd coordinate it with our road building program. And, you know, I, I think, I think when you line it up against the process now, I, I for one have no line of sight into what the plan is, how it gets executed, what the priorities are, you know, what the numbers are, and frankly, there's at least testimony as part of the DPU rate case that indicates, you know, capital improvement can't take place without RIM. And we would not, the second bullet says, no additional surcharge. There's, there'd be no RIM assessment in addition to rates. So, you know, where do I come out on this? To me, one of the biggest statistics was the fact that every other medium-sized water system in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts but us is owned and operated by its municipality. It can't be an accident. And there, there are, I think, protections in place and regulations in place that dictate how these things are run, and that would provide us with an opportunity, I think, to run the system in the best interest of the town and the rate players. You know, I think we've proposed a governance structure that's transparent, as opposed to a for-profit governance structure that, you know, again, is, there's nothing wrong with, but there's, there's, there's no way to sort of see what the incentives are, what the priorities are of the upstream corporate owners. And frankly, you know, the other thing that I thought about, was thinking about today was, let's say we were, and, and let me say this too, this isn't about Aquarian, the operating company, for me. This is about Eversource or whoever is in the box on top. And so, I was thinking to myself, "Well, let's say we're, we're perfectly happy. We love Eversource. We, we are aligned with their corporate priorities." As a matter of fact, I think, you know, from the reading I did, they seem like solid corporate citizens. They're committed to diversity in their hiring, for instance. They support conservation causes, right? Let's say you really, you're, you're thrilled with that ownership. We have no control that they're going to stay in that box, right? They can, they could sell this line of business tomorrow. This is a new venture for them, right? This is their first foray into water. So, we have no guarantee that that structure's going to stay in place. And it's that kind of like, it's that kind of uncertainty of, gee, is it going to be Macquarie today? Is it Eversource tomorrow? Is it somebody else on day three? And just, again, the, the requirement of managing the company to a standard that's not reflective, I think, of the, the town. And, yeah, I, I think that's about it. You know, the, the one other thing I did as part of this, just because, again, I, I found it an interesting exercise, was, you know, I read some of the academic literature, and I read some of the investment literature, and, you know, it's, it's not surprising, I think, that for-profit entities want to get into the water business. There's a Goldman Sachs white paper out there that refers to, refers to water as blue gold. It's a stable investment, it's inflation-protected, it's, it's, it can be attractive in certain, you know, certain systems can be highly attractive. We're a community that pays our bills, so we're highly attractive in that way. You know, and again, I, I don't begrudge that, but I'm not certain that's who the town of Hingham needs calling the shots with respect to, you know, its water resource. So, I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Question, comment?
Yeah, a couple of things. Karen, thank you, not only for all the great work, but also being able to explain it in, in a way that makes it understandable, because you get, you know, you start getting into Massachusetts general law, and, you know, the, the non-lawyer on the board, I get, I get overwhelmed pretty quickly. But I, I know that this is a topic that, that many citizens have been very interested in, and I think the information here is being laid out in a way that, that is accessible and understandable by people. And, you know, that's important because there are going to be some important decisions that the town is going to make. Just, I made a couple of random notes, these aren't in any sort of particular order, but I appreciate that, you know, you have, and you've mentioned it a couple of times, the best interests of the town up there. And, you know, I, I think the way that, that we've all looked at this, and, you know, maybe for just people to remember, when the town initiated the, the feasibility study six years ago, none of the three of us were actually on the Board of Selectmen at the time. It was a different board, and it was really driven by what is in the town's best interest. It, it always sort of has been that. And I feel like in particular recently, things have started to get a little bit contentious. And I continue to think about the fact that this, our, our job is to advance what's in the best interests of the town. And it's helpful to see that what's being proposed here is very much the norm. I didn't have a sense of how other municipally-owned water systems were operated, but knowing that 39 out of 41 of, of similar size have a multi-community aspect and have their executive branches water commissioners, tells me that, that what we're doing here is, we're sort of, you know, following some other best practices from other communities. You know, sometimes in Hingham, we like to say we lead, but I think sometimes one of the reasons we're a AAA bond community is, we pick our points when to be a follower. We let other people kind of try things out first. With respect to water quality, I would just emphasize that the role of the DEP is unchanged regardless of who owns the water company. The sampling that takes place, the reporting that takes place, the certification and licensing requirements for anybody who operates it are all the same. I was at a recent meeting in Situate on, on water, and I remember a statistic that last year, the town of Situate produced 5,000 samples during the year for the DEP, which, which, and, and, you know, the, and that was sort of the norm. That wasn't, that wasn't because of any quality issues, that's just how rigorous the DEP is. With, with respect to the rate-setting process, I would just sort of point out to people that this board, actually, the, the Board of Selectmen has the authority for setting a lot of different rates in Hingham, including the tax rate. We set rates for ambulance fees and other things. And I think what, what this board and a practice that, that we've adopted since I've been on the board is that we take that responsibility very seriously, and whenever there is a process for rate setting, an item is posted on the agenda. And, and our practice has typically been, we bring the issue up at one meeting, and then we wait to afford opportunity for citizens to engage in the process. We get assistance from the Hingham Journal in publicizing it. So, you know, I, I, I've gotten a sense that for some, that, that there is a bit of a concern that, that the Board of Selectmen might in, in some way abuse that authority for rate setting, and I would point to the track And I would point to the track record that this board and previous boards of selectmen have had, with respect to how seriously we take the rate-setting process on anything we do, and that that's a public process. I would agree with you that the rate-setting process that you're proposing provides greater accessibility and greater transparency. I sometimes feel like, you know, when I go onto the DPU website and I look in the file room, you know, there are all kinds of documents there, but they're all organized with like a number. So, it's, you know, DPU 428, Exhibit R. So, the only way you know what it is, is to click it and open it up and read it. And there's thousands of documents out there. So, for example, when, you know, if you want to find the capital plan, the Aquarian Capital Plan, you know, it's like a needle in a haystack. You're clicking, and you're hoping, you know, you're hoping that you can find it. I would also mention that the cost to Hingham to defend a rate case, and we typically share those costs with Hull, but it's about $75,000 per rate case. This rate case is more expensive because of the chain of events with the refiling in February. And, you know, the other thing I would point out is that, you know, Karen, you mentioned that under town ownership, the town, that we as the town would be subject to prevailing wages for capital improvements. And just on some of the engineering work, we did a little bit of work to try to say, okay, if you strip out the profit requirement, and you strip out the depreciation, and, you know, you look at the town cost, and you coordinate it with road building, how does that compare to prevailing wage, which I've heard quoted at different percentages? And, you know, we didn't really have the ability to do a rigorous enough analysis that's worth, that we could sort of share. But my impression is that those two things kind of net out pretty well. I would also say, again, I was down in Situate for a water meeting they had, and in Aquarian's filings, they talk about a cost of $275 per foot to do a main replacement, and in Situate, the cost is under $200. So, you know, would we have the same experience? I don't know. I might ask, and, you know, Tom, you've been helping us all with, you know, different follow-ups and, you know, validating, refining, you know, that's really helpful to do. I think it would be helpful for me to know the procedure and the process for setting up an enterprise fund. That just might be helpful to...
Be a component to the, necessary component to the town meeting vote for acquisition.
Yeah, you know, I...
Yeah, we'll get that language.
I don't know a lot about how those are set up, so that would be...
And Michelle's had conversations with Sue about that, so we have enterprise funds for, or enterprise fund for the country club, for instance.
Right.
So, you know, we're not, it's familiar territory. And again, I think from a statutory and accounting standpoint, there are a series of requirements and rules that the town would need to abide by, and Sue seemed up to speed on that. So, it should be fairly straightforward to pull that together.
Yeah.
One comment, I'll just jump in on rates, when we talk about prevailing wage and rate setting. You know, the slide that showed the municipal ownership of medium-sized water had the bill comparison for 7,500 gallons of water with a median for medium-sized systems at $40.20. And we currently clock in, or Aquarian currently clocks in at $60.96. The maximum for medium-sized water companies is $73.37. So, you know, it shows that, because this was another driver for us as well, was, you know, is it going to be more expensive for us to operate? And I think, I think that dial was saying, you know, no, if all of these other communities can operate in this medium sphere, the 6096, you know, is on the high side of that.
Yep. Thank you so much. This is really excellent work, and I hope this will get put up on the website with all the other documents.
You know, or this, really.
Couldn't it? You have a lights back on?
Yeah.
Public comment.
You have no questions?
I have comments.
Oh.
Yes, sir. Jim O'Hare, Levin, Heron Way, Selectwoman Johnson, I'd like to commend you on your presentation. I thought it was very well-done and complete and insightful. As a follow-up to my comments of last week pertaining to the August 23 full-page ad in the Hingham Journal, where the Aquarian Water Company offered to split the costs of a independent survey, looking at the operating costs going forward over a 30-year period, there seemed to me to be a significant discrepancy in those two numbers. And as a taxpayer in the town of Hingham, that would be helpful, not only to me, but I have a feeling to perhaps some other people. I don't have an iron or an axe to grind in this, one way or the other. I think it's a very interesting thing. I did have some exposure, in light of full disclosure, back in the 80s on the Hingham Water Company, of which I was a member for nine years, when Catherine Salisbury was the chairwoman. And we were engaged in a not terribly different situation from the one that you find yourselves in now, and had an outside source of advice, which I think at the time, in light of the fact that the Clean Water Act was instituted in the very early 80s, and had some real questions about the, how this would expand and how this would affect the town. So, I thought at that time, the independent outside advice was effective, cogent, and proved fruitful. And the filtration plant really was a result of that Water Act, and they alluded to the fact that this would expand. So, I think it would be informative to somebody, not only like myself, but to other people in the town, if the selectmen would consider availing themselves of getting an outside person, group, who is fully versed in the economics and could evaluate the two diverse numbers that now have appeared as to the operating costs going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. We anticipated addressing that in due course, but for the time being, I'd like to focus the audience's attention to the issues raised by Ms. Johnson, and to the extent you have a comment or question on those, I'd invite anybody to comment or come forward. Just identify yourself by name and address, address your questions at chair, Mr. Napoli.
Thank you. Diane Denaply, 16 Gardner Street. Wanted to thank you for letting me speak. I wanted to address a little about the CAB, since that came up. As you are aware, since I sent an email, I am a member of the CAB, which is the Consumer Advisory Board. I have been for about five years. I was asked to join, I think, because of my experience in the telecommunications world, and it was something I found very interesting, because I did not know much at all about the water company, even though I thought I would. As far as compensation for full disclosure, I did receive one bottle of wine in 2017. I believe it was a white bottle of wine, so I just want that to be known publicly. But there is no compensation besides that.
No bottles of water?
No. They don't give bottles of water. I have asked.
It's too expensive.
And it's, no, it's, there's environmental reasons for that. I've learned a lot, and I've really gotten to know many people at Aquarian. Samantha's here, I think I ask a lot of questions. I don't let them get away with things. I asked, you know, I want to know what's going on. I think I would invite everybody here to come to a CAB meeting, because I think you really will see who's attending, what type of questions, what Aquarian, every quarter, they give you updates on the network, what's happening. It's really informative, and I think the best way to find out what's going on with your water, and everything else related to water is the industry. I won't comment on, you know, what I was going to comment on in respect, Mr. Hill, he asked, to just keep it to governance, but I did want to clarify what the CAB does, the usefulness of the CAB. And I do invite anybody, and I don't see why that would be a problem, to come and just sort of see what we do. There's nothing secretive about the meetings. Sam's here, we're all very normal people who represent the towns that have Hingham, Hull, Cohasset, and occasionally, I think there was someone from Norwell. Thank you. I just, again, this was very informative, a lot to process, a lot to think about. I just, you know, as a person who's been involved, not only in the CAB, but many other boards in Hingham, I appreciate the diligence. This is a major decision that the town is going to be facing. You definitely know that. I don't envy anyone in your position. You are going to be the ones in the records of the history book of, did we buy this, or did we not, and how then did we run it, and what will be the financial repercussions moving forward? Being a little bit of a history buff myself, someone gave me a book from 1934. You might have this. It's Hingham Old and New. And in this, it talks a little about the water company and acquisition or not to acquire. And I must say, you would think this was on pinboard or discussion board, some of the heated conversation in this. So, I don't know if I can leave that for you to review, but I thought it was very insightful.
I may own copy.
Okay. And again, I just think, let's go slow, let's make very rational decisions, let's have everything open. I think having full transparency on both sides, including Aquarian's, is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Just give me the page number, and I'll read my own book.
I wonder if everyone has this sitting around.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Napoli. And to kind of go off on them a little bit, I think we are going slowly and deliberately, and we're trying to provide the public with a clear explanation of what we're finding. I think Ms. Johnson's explanation of governance was excellent. And, you know, this is part of an ongoing effort to educate the ratepayer as to the issues, I think, that are important to consider in the ultimate decision. So, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment? Yes, ma'am, in the back. Step up to the podium and identify yourself by name and address, please. Thank you.
My name is Samantha Woods. I'm on the Citizens Advisory Board for Aquarian. I live in Hull, so I'm not a Hingham resident, so it's sort of a different perspective that I have, sitting here with folks that I can't vote for. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the governance. As Karen mentioned, I reached out to her as a board member of the Weir River Watershed Association and founding board member of that. I've been involved since 1999 in being concerned with the health of the Weir River, which I'm sure many of you realize how impacted the Weir River is adversely by the withdrawal of water for Hingham, Hull, and Cohasset. You're not alone in that. Many communities in eastern Massachusetts, as they developed, located their wells close by two rivers, because that's where the water is. And unfortunately, that has had an impact on many of our coastal river systems. I'm sure the Ipswich River is well-known to many people. The river that runs dry, the Weir River, is no less impacted. So, in terms of the governance, you know, I think, since I've been involved in the Citizens Advisory Board and been able to be a voice for the environment and for the conservation, you know, ethos, and trying to push that education through that board, I feel like that has been met with some, you know, action on the point, on the part of Aquarian. And I guess, in terms of the governance structure that you're proposing, I'm wondering if there would be an opportunity for a similar voice for the river. Because the reason that the river goes dry now, and that there are no herring left in the Weir River, you know, is because there was, nobody noticed as the river started to run dry more and more often. With having people who are concerned about that be involved in the governance or on the Citizens Advisory, it only would enable the decision-making to be better. And I think it's an incredibly important part and an opportunity for, if this was to move forward, to incorporate that voice at the table and make sure that it gets balanced with all the other interests that will be at that table, including how much will it cost. So, I don't know if you want to speak at all to it at all at this point, but that's sort of my comment. I have a secondary comment.
Why don't you go with your secondary comment?
So, as a, taking off my environmentalist hat, I'm a citizen in Hull. And that structure, you know, I'm wondering to myself, how does Hull and Cohasset really have an influence over rate structure, or any power, really? They would be outvoted by the numbers on that Citizen Advisory Board. They certainly don't have any voice at the ballot box, you know, for the selectmen here, who would be the water commissioners. And I'm just curious as to, you know, I understand that they have a lesser number of population, but, you know, they would be completely outvoted.
So, you and I talked briefly about this, I think, at the conclusion of our coffee. And that's part of the, part of the reason, that was part of the reason I started, where I started in the presentation, was to show that Hingham has a right to purchase and what it has the right to purchase. And part of the reason why I was stressing that this, this structure is really a day-one governance structure. So, what evolves from there, you know, could take a number of different forms. And, you know, part of what, again, we were trying to do was stay on point and on focus in terms of what sort of operational structure do we need in place on the first day of operation after purchase? We have met multiple times, actually, with the town administrator and town manager in Hull and Cohasset. I met last week and the week before with representatives from the board of selectmen in those towns. And we would, I think, as I've indicated in this presentation, memorialize our understanding on the relationship between Hull and Cohasset and Hingham, you know, in an additional document that would be sent to their board of selectmen. So, I guess, you know, I don't know whether I hear you sort of going down the line on sort of a water district. That's not what we have right now. We have one municipality that has the right to purchase a service area, and will operate that service area, you know, again, in keeping with both statutory and regulatory provisions. I would submit to you that Hull and Cohasset have, you know, don't have any other voice in the operation of Aquarian right now, right? And frankly, this, in my mind, builds in at least more public transparency. For instance, you're here speaking to us tonight, right? So, no, you don't vote for us, but you certainly would have an opportunity to come to Hingham and present your concerns as part of a public process. So, you know, and I do think that, while you're right, majority of the committee as proposed, again, could change form, is Hingham-heavy. It still works with the, you know, water superintendent to help set rates. So, I guess we weren't looking to upset the apple cart that exists today on day one.
If I could also just add that Hingham and Hull actually do have, right now, we have an intermunicipal agreement with the utility, and that's with the sewer. And actually, you know, the Hull Board of Selectmen and the Hull Sewer sets the rates for the intermunicipal agreement.
Without any...
And Hingham is notified in that. We have, there are no public hearings. Hingham doesn't have a voice in it anyway. But I think, due to our longstanding, very cooperative relationship, I think that we have found ways to communicate, and I don't think we've had an experience where we have felt that something has been disadvantageous to the town. I think it would be our hope that, you know, we all kind of rise together. And I would just add one other...
Oh, go ahead. I don't think I'm overstating that. I think they, the selectmen in Hull and Cohasset, as well as the management, were supportive of this effort and this structure.
Yep. They were definitely supportive of the presentation or the proposal that Selectman Johnson rolled out tonight, when we talked to them about it. They were, we also talked about not just the agreement with the sewer, with the sewer IMA, but also our cooperative efforts on Shrek, on the regional communication center for dispatch. So, we have a number of places where all these, the three communities are working together already, and...
cooperative efforts on Shrek, on the regional communication center for dispatch. So we have a number of places where all these, the three communities are working together already and extremely cooperatively. So there's a history to that, and I think that we would follow that.
I just add, you know, one other piece. Our water company, your water, you know, yours and my water company, has had three different owners in the last 10 years.
Sure.
That's unsettling to me. You know, when it went from Mass American to Macquarie, all of a sudden, we were owned by an Australian bank in sort of a hedge fund with a 10-year life. And it's my opinion that decisions were made on a 10-year life cycle. As Karen said, these organizations' first responsibility are to their shareholders, which is completely understandable. I think we've seen some experiences where sometimes that priority is often at odds with some of the decisions that might affect us as customers. I, three different owners in 10 years for a resource as precious as water, you know, and you think about having to establish the relationships with respect to operations, with respect to water conservation. There's some uncertainty of ownership that I think we've experienced, and I don't rule out, you know, we don't know what can happen going forward.
I'd just like to add that, you know, the presentation that you saw tonight also provides different options with respect to the kind of governance model. That was illustrative. That was my takeaway from all of this. That being said, as Mr. Mayo indicated, we work really hard to work really well with the town of Hull. We try really hard, you know, with respect to transportation, public safety, the library. I mean, we can just tick off a whole series of cooperative governmental interactions. So I don't think Hull's going to be left behind on anything that happens here. Or Cohasset.
[laughing]
Sharon, would you like to add anything else, ma'am?
No, I just want to kind of go back to that first part about the whole river issue and, you know, how would this, you know, would there be a way? Again, I think you have, if it goes forward, it's a unique opportunity to really have some different voices at the table, making sure that you're getting, that there's good advice being given. Decisions are only as good as the advice that they are based on. And so if you don't have anybody at the table who's concerned with that, then I think it gets lost. And that's probably, again, why, and again, not for-profit or municipal community-owned water systems are, all have, you know, issues with over-allocation of the resources and impacts on the environment. So I guess, you know, again, you have a unique opportunity and love to see, you know, that voice being shared in the governance structure.
Well, and, you know, I think that the three towns have an opportunity to construct a board. You know, I'd look at it almost like the school building committee, where we would tick off a series of skillsets that we would look for to be part of that Citizens Advisory Board. So, you know, it was my thought that that, that voice could be incorporated at that piece of the process. You know, the other thing I guess I'd say that's slightly different from for-profit ownership is there are a series of laws that require or facilitate, I think, interaction between a municipally-owned water system and the Conservation Commission and land use regulation and police. So I think that, to me, what it was saying to me was, you know, brings to bear, I think, the full resources of the municipality of the town of Hingham in the operation of the water company. And so it's, again, not unlike what we do in other aspects of town government, where we rely on the resources and skillsets from a variety of our town departments. And I think that we would have that opportunity if it were a town-owned, a town-run water company.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to say anything? Yes, Mr. Carey.
Tom Carey, 1131 Main Street, a satisfied customer of the Aquarian Water Company. I commend them on how quickly they fixed the break outside my home a week or two ago with all that brown water flowing down Main Street. With respect to a couple of the points that were made, I wasn't asked when Aquarian sold to Eversource. Maybe if I were an investor in Blackrock, I might have had to say. But the customers in either Hull, Hingham, or Cohasset weren't asked. It's a delight to see a full-blown proposal with respect to the choices available to us as customers and as citizens of Hingham to determine where our future lies in terms of the ownership of this asset, as well as in terms of how we want it to be governed and who people should be responsible to. With respect to the assets, it's not just the number of customers. From a business perspective, the reason why this is such a desirable investment is because it's essentially a monopoly, which is great. The assets we get are the franchise, so we end up controlling all of that. It's not like we're standing, we're stepping into the shoes of Aquarian. This isn't a merger or a stock acquisition. It's an asset purchase. And there'll be a new sheriff in town with new priorities, new operational control. Among the assets are tens upon tens of thousands of acres of critical conservation property now owned by Aquarian, including 50,000 or 60,000 acres of Ackert Pond, the source which in the early 1880s, when the town decided it didn't want to take a flyer on something as novel as trying to pump water from Ackert Pond down to Hingham Square. And for God's sakes, what would you do with all the snakes that would come in the pipes? These are the debates in the history books that were mentioned. Well, we're well past that. But in, when I think of the assets, I think of a professor of mine at B.C., where for some godforsaken reason I got stuck into a geology course, which I had no interest whatsoever. But I ended up earning a good, learning a good deal. And Father Skian's parting message to us, knowing that he'd be lucky if there were one or two geologists in the whole damn crowd, was that geology is important for all of us. And mark my words, in, and I forget the number of years he used, he probably thought it would be over, but I think he's hit it right on the head. He said, "Before we know it, water in New England, because of our geology, will be as valuable as oil." So here we are with the opportunity to purchase and preserve for the inhabitants of Hingham and the benefit of all the customers who are receiving this water, to get such a valuable asset and control it locally, not have it controlled by international investors. So the assets we're looking at are extraordinarily important. And frankly, I would put Hingham's record with regard to conservation and preservation of natural resources up against that of Eversource any day of the week. Now, with regard to the governance and this sort of rate worries, we would be required, the town of Hingham, you all or your successors, as water commissioners, are required by law to treat all equally situated customers the same. So if the water commissioners have made a decision on rates that outrages every customer in Hull, that decision will have equal application to Hingham customers. And this place will be a lot hotter than it is today.
Hard to believe.
And when it comes to complaining about rates, if you asked me, "What's your preference? Do you want to go through a regulatory system with all the administrative law complications and issues of when the regulated capture the regulators and all the rest of it, and spend thousands and thousands of dollars disputing whether you should pay that much?" Or would you rather have electoral control over the person who set the rate and whether that person will have a job when it comes time for the next rate setting? And I think local control in these circumstances would be highly beneficial. And then finally, though I don't necessarily share all of the comments that were made about the new owner of Aquarian, particularly with respect to customer satisfaction levels, but the idea that we're somehow giving up professional management and taking a flyer on our own, God knows what, how those selectmen would screw this thing up, that sort of argument is very misleading. First of all, I would ask, who the hell knows how Eversource is going to screw it up, since they're getting into running a water company for the first time? So as far as I'm concerned, were Hingham to decide to buy the assets, we'd be buying it from a controlling entity who only had a year in the business already. Secondly, granting that Aquarian runs a good water company, at least for purposes of the discussion, they're not the only ones who can do that. The company has quite justifiably proudly proclaimed that it won an award this past year for its water quality. The award it won, it was actually one of 18 similarly, 18 other communities that won the same award in the same category, 16 of which were publicly owned and operated. So the implication that only private ownership can deliver good-quality water is, I think, completely unsupported by all of the evidence we have. In particular, when I look at a map and I see all of those other communities that are doing it, and I hear what sounds to me like an argument that we shouldn't do this because somehow it's beyond our capabilities. Hingham can't do this. And I think, Hingham can't do it? And every other community in Massachusetts can? Something here doesn't register. And frankly, as a long, longstanding resident of the town with some familiarity about how we operate, I take affront at the suggestion, "This is beyond us." I think you have outlined a governance system that would work. I would be happy to participate in all the debate and discussion and tweak it to get it exactly right. But I hope the town won't lose sight of the fact that this is probably our last opportunity to commandeer and own this precious resource for ourselves, for the future, and for all our grandchildren, and all of the future inhabitants of a town that, after all, has celebrated 375 years of existence. And the snakes don't scare me anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Anybody else like to comment? Okay. I don't want to be accused of kicking the can down the road by the question, Mr. Hearn, is it Hearn? Oh, O'Hare, excuse me, sir. Got it. Has raised both tonight and previously. Tom, where are we on that? We've got...
So my understanding is we have, Mary's done some research.
I just want to share a little bit of information with my colleagues that I think might help inform this conversation. And, Tom, I, if you could maybe... Can you put that on slideshow, please?
You got the strobe light going on yours, too?
I got the strobe light.
Man, it's warm in here.
Do you think you could, um, thank you, Tom. Do you think you could hand me the clicker?
Yes.
Thank you. So just as, as a little bit of background, on April 22nd, the town received a request from an attorney representing Aquarian to get an electronic copy of the financial model that the town had built. And, you know, people may recall that the litigation concluded shortly before that. So while there were certain items that the town, that was, that were privileged for the town with the litigation, pretty much a couple of days after the litigation concluded, we got a request. And on April 30th, the same version of the town's financial model that's been on the website since July 10th was provided to Aquarian. Last week, the board was notified by a citizen that the Aquarian website actually contains a financial model that Aquarian has done, that was done in PDF format. And, you know, our, the folks who have been leading the financial effort for the town were unavailable last week. But we took sort of an initial look, and I just want to share with my colleagues a couple of, a couple of conclusions. Number one, there are no errors in the town's financial analysis. Number two, the costs of town ownership, the cost of town ownership are the same in the town's model and in the Aquarian model. And the differences between the two analyses that Mr. O'Hare referred to are driven by long-term assumptions. And I want to walk you through what those are because my, my impression after going through that is that many of these differences and assumptions will be settled by the DPU as part of the rate case that is ongoing right now. So if you look up there, on July 10th, the town presented two different scenarios. And one scenario called for $136 million in savings over 31 years. And that was essentially applying the entire rate increase that's been requested by the DPU with no capital surcharge, which everybody's been referring to as RIM. And that model, as Mr. Asher and Mr. Sigfried walked through, produced $136 million in savings over 31 years. So I just want to get a couple benchmarks so that we can all follow the numbers. The town's second scenario included the RIM capital surcharge, and that resulted in $304 million in savings over 31 years. So the Aquarian financial analysis that is up on their website is concluding that, that under town ownership, rather than $136 million of savings, costs would go up by $40 million over 31 years. And so that's $176 million difference. So... So, so that's, so again, there are five main differences in assumptions, and four of these are going to be clarified in the rate case. First of all, it's what we call the beginning cost of service for the test year. And during the rate case, Aquarian has submitted a number for cost of service. At one point, it was $13.7 million, which is the cost to operate our service area. In some later filings, that number changed a little bit. It went to 13.2, it went to 13.1. We have not updated the town financial model since July because we knew there were a lot of variables that could change. So right now, there is a difference in that beginning cost of service, but the DPU is going to decide what that value is. The DPU will decide that for us. Secondly, the rate case includes a deferred tax liability. It's called ADIT. And my understanding is that when the tax law was revised earlier this year, a lot of the utility companies were passing back any tax savings to rate payers. And there's been a little bit of discussion in our rate case about how that's being done here in Hingham with Aquarian. In fact, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, who does get involved in rate cases, raised a concern about how Aquarian was treating this liability, and that actually prompted the DPU to open a second case on this item. So this is about a $2.8 million item, and there's a question of how it's treated. The DPU is going to decide that. The third thing is the amount of the proposed rate increase. The town's model assumes that the entire 13.89% rate increase will be approved by the DPU. The Aquarian model is assuming that the DPU will approve 75% of that rate request, which would result in a 10% increase. Again, the DPU is going to decide. They may decide 13.9, they may decide 9.7, they may decide an entirely different number. Fourth is the RIM capital surcharge. The towns, one of the town's analyses includes the RIM capital surcharge. The Aquarian model doesn't include it at all. That has a significant financial impact on the financial model. And again, the DPU is going to decide. They're going to decide whether to allow the RIM capital surcharge. They're going to decide the amount by which, the, how much will be adopted. So all of those four items, which again, I would characterize as differences in assumptions, will be settled by the, by the DPU. Now, the fifth assumption is the amount of future rate increases by Aquarian. And in the town's model, it assumes a 10% increase every three years for 30 years. And that's actually based on what we saw historically. In 2009, the DPU awarded a 23% increase, and that was the first increase awarded in, in about eight years. So that's about, that's about 3% a year. And in 2012, Aquarian requested an 18.7% rate increase, and the DPU approved 10.63. So again, three years, 10.63%, about 3% per year. So that's, that was the basis for the town making an assumption about a 10% increase every three years for 30 years. In the Aquarian model that's on the website, it assumes an average increase every three years of 3.65%. So if, if you divide that by three, that assumes about a 1.2% increase every year. Now that fifth item is, is not going to be, is not going to be settled in the rate case. But I did notice that in the Aquarian model, there's a disclaimer at the bottom of every page, and it says, "The financial values in this model do not constitute a business plan or a promise of any financial return by Aquarian." So I took that disclaimer to, to mean that this is not a commitment in any way about future rate increases. It was an assumption. I would also just mention that in looking at that model, I was struck at the financial picture and how different it was than what was laid out in the rate case. In particular, in the last rate case filing, Aquarian talked about the need for the 13.89% rate increase and the RIM, because according to their briefing, they were unable to achieve adequate returns, they were having difficulty meeting debt coverage ratios without those things. So I would also point out that in the rate case, and, and our counsel was pretty rigorous in trying to get a sense of what, what we could expect for future rate increases beyond 2021. And despite very rigorous questioning by counsel, Aquarian representatives were pretty steadfast in the rate case and said that they couldn't forecast the timing, frequency, or amount of future rate increases. So I was sort of struck that in the rate case, there was a, you know, we're not able to do this, and then in this, in this model, it's, it's there. So again, those four items are going to be clarified by, by the DPU in the rate case. And again, just, just to show on this water rates, if, if you look in the last 10 years, those, that's a, a summary of the increases or decreases that were requested and then what was granted by the DPU. And the board may recall that in 2013, Aquarian refinanced the debt on the water treatment plant, which resulted in an 8% actually decrease in rates. If you look at the nine-year period of 2008 to 2017, which includes that decrease, the rate increase was a total of 26%, which was an average of 2.9% every year. If you assume that the 13.89% rate increase is granted, that would result in a 44% increase in our water rates over the last 10 years, or an average of 4.4% per year over the last 10 years. But that excludes the, the RIM capital surcharge. So again, just to sort of go back here, there's $176 million difference between the two models. There are no errors. The town numbers are the same in both. The differences lie in five assumptions. Four of those assumptions will be clarified by the DPU in the rate case that's pending right now.
Well, in light of that, wouldn't it make sense to see what the DPU says before we go forward?
Yeah, I mean, I think the DPU is really the only entity that can provide certainty on those four assumptions.
And then we'll know. We are anticipating the DPU findings in mid to late October.
So Mary, I mean, what my takeaway from this is, it's not an auditing exercise.
You know, yeah, I mean, you know, you can't really audit assumptions. I mean, you know, and, and I would look and say, again, the DPU is going to, many of those things will be clarified by the DPU. So then the question is, if you're looking at future rate increases, the frequency and the amount, you know, I don't know, I mean, I'm a finance person by education, and I, I was a practitioner for a while. I don't know how you audit assumptions.
Yeah.
I think what you, what you do is you lay those assumptions out, and you provide the rationale for why those assumptions are there. But I don't, I don't know how you audit an assumption.
Yep. I guess the, the other thing that's just troubling, this is sort of an aside to, to the main question, is just the difference between some of the statements as part of the DPU rate case that you have, you and Tom have excerpted in the prior presentations that this board has received, and then what is, I guess purportedly, part of their new financial model. Like it doesn't, you know, the, the RIM in particular, I, because I remember I asked you this question, you know, they're saying they, they can't undertake capital without the RIM, and they don't, they, there's a sentence in here from the rate case that says the company cannot predict under what circumstances RIM would end.
Right.
And then, I don't know, to not factor that in. But in any event, we, we'd know, we'll, we'll know one through four. Yeah.
There will be, there will be much more clarity as that rate case is settled. A couple of those items, it will be definitive. What's the starting revenue point? What's the amount of the rate increase? You know, I think one thing is for sure, which is that after the DPU has made the decisions that are under its jurisdiction, there will be more clarity than there is today.
Okay. And I guess my other question would be, how do we get this out to folks? Like, you know, you've spent a long time with these numbers. We've spent a long time with the numbers. We've listened, we listened to Ed and John several months ago talk about how the financial, financial model was constructed and how Ed said there were like 109 financial inputs that went into building the model, that were all taken from materials and information provided by, by Aquarian. So how, how do we, how do we get this out there? That, that this is really the, the crux of the, of the differential?
That's, that's a good question because that's an excellent question.
Well, we're kind of doing it right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talking about it publicly.
Maybe a full-page color ad.
Well, I was going to say, you know, we can't, you know...
I like my picture there.
I would, I would also say that...
One with a smile.
You know, over the last several weeks, as, as we've been having discussions, we've been working to clarify and validate the town's financial model. And, you know, so, so for example, one of the things that we talked about with our financial advisors is, should we use the same interest rate on capital for 30 years? Or should we assume that, you know, that, that interest rates will, will, interest rates will rise? And, and so, you know, we, we sort of have a list of those items, but one of the things that we didn't want to do is, you know, you know, okay, it's this week, here, we've updated the town's model for one thing, and then next week, we update it for another thing. I think that when the rate case is settled, it is an opportunity to refresh the town's financial analysis to provide greater certainty on these assumptions. And I, you know, I'd further add that with, with all the great work of everybody at this table and many of our colleagues, it's an opportunity, I think, to, you know, perhaps talk about some different ways to engage the public outside of this meeting room. I think, you know, I think we all understand that this is a very significant decision, and, and it's a decision that town, you know, town meeting makes. And I, I view my job as trying to provide as much information to town meeting as possible to inform those decisions. So I, I think it's a timely question. And, and as Tom said, I think we're expecting that the DPU decisions will be forthcoming.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Carey.
I still live at 1131 Main. I didn't address Mr. O'Hare's comments because I had the impression that that wasn't going to be dealt with tonight. But now that we've gotten into it, I would just suggest first, that the proposal that somehow the different numbers being floated around by the unwilling seller and the maybe willing buyer aren't anything that can be solved by submitting it to some sort of third-party arbitrator to figure out the difference. We've been through that. We've had years of litigation with Aquarian. And if you recall that other than being able to agree on historical data, for the most part, our experts and their experts differed in hosts of things. And particularly, as you point out, when you're dealing with projected assumptions based on future rates, 30 years out, where's the figure for adjustments to capital on the sea rising and on and on? This is essentially an exercise in which you look at, well, how accurate is the data? It's extraordinarily accurate in the sense that they were required by law to, and did, provide the state with the detailed financials of the operation of the place for years. So what the town put in the model in terms of, this is what they spent in 2016 on executive salaries, this is the profit that went to the outside investors that won't have to be paid if the town owns it, a lot of this stuff is not really in dispute. What will fundamentally be before town meeting is the question of whether two-thirds of the citizens of the town voting at the town meeting are of the view that it is in the best interest of the town to consummate this acquisition, to exercise the option we've had for over 100 years, because taking everything into account, including numbers, but everything, that's the right decision for the town at this time. To the extent that any decision of town meeting rests upon financial numbers, we have our own independent third-party group to validate conflicting claims. I've said this before, it's the advisory committee. And town meeting justly relies on the input of the advisory committee when it, when it hears conflicting arguments about dollars and cents. Now personally, I'm prejudiced and biased, and I admit it, having seen John Asher and Ed Siegfried and their work with numbers, their experience on the advisory committee, and their interests in the game, which a totally volunteer helped the town. This is the best information we have. I personally don't have much trouble accepting as true and valid and creditworthy what those fellows tell me, the numbers add up to. In addition, the townspeople will have, by the time we get to town meeting, and this has all been vetted, there'll be other public debate, they'll pick any of our numbers, we can pick their, at their numbers. Third-party experts of different sorts are going to be consulted. You've already had input from the town's financial advisors. I assume that by the time we vote, we're going to have some idea whether anyone would lend us this money, which ought to be a good indication of whether we can go forward. And so in terms of governance or process or mechanisms for resolving it, I, in all due respect, I don't think the notion that some third-party arbitrator is going to listen to our fight and say, this is the truth, and that will settle the matter. It won't. And in any event, it's an issue for the town to decide, is the value there to exercise this? And so I agree, having myself spent some amount of time going through the complexity of all of this, it's extraordinarily complex financial accounting. But we've got good quality people looking at it, we're working with established numbers, you have additional experts. And if, when it comes to it, someone gets up on the floor of town meeting and says, and the seller says, you're paying too much, don't buy. It's, it's up to the citizens of the town to evaluate which numbers they want to credit for purposes of casting their vote. This, this issue of any dispute in the numbers, I believe, and I submit, is not something that could be resolved by just passing it off to a third party to let us know. I, I do agree that if the DPW renders its decision prior to whenever town meeting votes, that would eliminate these disagreements that are based on different assumptions. It still leaves you with a relatively complex $100 million expenditure that town meeting will want to play close attention to. But I believe that by the time it's put to a vote, with the rigorous work that we traditionally do and have doubled down on for something of this magnitude, years of litigation, years of ex... Town has available with superb financial skills analyzing it, hired experts to look at it, and the sound judgment of the Advisory Committee, by the time the vote is taken, I think the citizens of Hingham will feel they understand the numbers well enough to cast a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Yes, Mr. Napoli.
Just a couple of points to follow up on that. I'll be brief. The six years that, in litigation, just to clarify, that was for the cost of the acquisition. That wasn't for what we're looking at now, which would be more rates, governance, and financial models moving forward. I think that's an important distinction. I personally have followed this case very closely, and I have attempted to look into the models. And like you said, Mary, this is going to be very confusing. You go on a TBU site, for most people, it, it's pretty difficult to understand the minutia, and it's really important to understand it. So, I, I do still think there could be value after the DPU, after the four critical assumptions are clarified, that if we still have significant differences, it may behoove us to look for a third party to say, okay, not to, as this man suggested, not to say who's right or wrong, or to weigh in, but just to have a second set of eyes coming in and looking and saying, maybe this is something a little different than we thought. And as far as how do you get this out, I mean, that's always a great question. I know, I think in 2012, John Walsh from Aquarian and my elected man at the time did sort of a in-house debate where people could come and ask questions. Just the thought now that the, that the litigious part is over, perhaps we could look at doing something like that, maybe in a series, or just any way to get people to talk and have facts, I think are important, because I think we all hear things that just are not true, and none of us want that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to comment before we move on to other matters that we have to address in tonight's meeting? I don't see any hands up, so I, I'd just like to thank those that came for this discussion for attending. Compliment the people who spoke, especially my colleagues, whose very thoughtful and well-reasoned presentations, I think, add value to the discussion and consideration that we as a Town have to make on this particular issue. We'll continue to speak to this as weeks and, and months evolve, educating you. I'd urge all that are watching tonight to continue to stay tuned to this issue, and thank you so much.
Thanks.
Next, we have a series of votes. Anti-climatic. Yes, I would, if you would.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Downtown Association to use the sidewalks and tunnel cap for the Hingham Arts Walk on Sunday, October 14th, 2018, from noon to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve the request of the Children's Craft Market to be held in conjunction with the Hingham Arts Walk on Sunday, October 14th, 2018, from 12:30 to 2:00.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Lima Sport, Inc., DBA South Shore Sports Center, for a private event to be held at the South Shore Sports Center on Saturday, September 29th, 2018, from 12:30 to 4:30 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Marco, Marco Bower on behalf of the Hingham High School Rowing Association for the Fall Parent Social to be held on Friday, September 14th, 2018, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Joel Leonard on behalf of Hingham Civic Music Theater for the 70th Anniversary Gala Celebration to be held at Derby Academy on Saturday, September 15th, 2018, from 7:15 to 10:15, to 10 o'clock p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we authorize the Chair to draft a letter on behalf of the Board to support the Library Trustee's request for an extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we've now completed the vote portion of the meeting. There will be no appointments tonight. At this juncture, we move directly to reports, and as we typically do, we'll start with the Assistant Town Administrator. Is there anything you'd like to add or say?
Not this evening, thank you.
Okay. Thomas?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Karen?
I think I've said quite enough.
Okay. Mary?
I'm good.
Wow.
It's on you. Let's go.
No pressure.
Update, 3A Task Force. Met last night. We're at the point where we are recommending certain steps with respect to design up to the rotary be acted upon by our Town Engineer and the engineering firm, DCI, that's working with the Town. That includes a number of safety improvements along that corridor, as well as to the intersection of Otis North and Summer Street, Summer Street and Water Street, and a conceptual design with respect to a roundabout, which is a, not a rotary, it's, it's a modification of that. We also do anticipate having a public meeting on September 26th with the DOT, who's retained VHB, to analyze the data, and provide a presentation with respect to an, an analysis of the diet, which was the experimental one lane in each direction from the Rotary on Summer Street going into Muzzy's Corner down at Rockland Street and George Washington Boulevard. So, that is very exciting, maybe not for some, but for me, it certainly is, because it represents a great deal of work, a great deal of money that's been put out by the taxpayers to make this a safer roadway to travel on. We anticipate working with the Hub and Development Committee, trying to integrate, you know, a landscape plan as well. Very exciting time. I mean, this is, this is the early stages of, you know, roadway improvements that can last for decades, so I'm, I'm happy about that. Additionally, I'd like to just pass on to the residents that little people are now going to school. I had the pleasure of seeing my grandson off on his first day on the school bus, going to Foster School, a place where, you know, my, my own children went and my siblings went. I feel transported back in time, seeing my grandson going on that bus, I have to say. But, you know, it, it is, it is an easy way to avoid a tragedy, just be alert, just give a little more time on that morning and afternoon commute if you could. And finally, I had a phone call with a, a friend of mine today, who was in the Pentagon when it got hit 17 years ago. And it was a friendly conversation, but it was, it was full of memories. You know, this, this is a, I think, one of those days in, in the memory of everybody sitting in this room that you, you won't forget. It's like, you know, Pearl Harbor, December 41, or when JFK was assassinated, it's, you know, I just urge people to reflect on that. And with that...
So I was reminded I do have something to say by someone. And certainly not to undermine that sentiment, but maybe to build on it, and that is, my colleagues and I will be signing proclamations congratulating two Hingham residents on their contributions to Hingham. One is George Irving, who's turning 101 years old. He lives right over here on Sanborn Road, and I gather he's a, a frequent fixture on that road, building community in Hingham, and also a participant here in the Hingham Rec Center Fitness Room three days a week, which is a, George is setting a high bar for that. And the, and the other person that we will award a proclamation to next week is Bill Friend for his contributions to the management of the country club over the long haul. So, I just, I, we're not, we don't announce those, but I, I wanted to just bring some, bring some awareness to those two items.
Ladies and gentlemen, I truly hope you appreciate the service that Karen Johnson and Mary Power are rendering to this Town. The presentations that you saw tonight were superb, thoughtful, well-prepared, very, very thought out, and I for one, find this to be a privilege and a pleasure to serve with such great colleagues. You know, the, the water company issue is a difficult one. You know, good people can disagree agreeably, and, you know, to the extent that you, you share a different view, we, we all respect that. But what we're trying to do here is, is advance, you know, an issue of generational importance for the Town's consideration, and we're trying to do it thoughtfully and respectfully and intelligently, so that when you hopefully show up to decide if that's the direction that we in fact choose to go, you'll be fully informed. And, that's our mission, that's our duty to you as selectmen, and we, we certainly hope that you are getting the information you need. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Good night, everyone.
Good night.